Great. Well, I think we're all here and I will just very quickly summarize what we're doing. So I'm Reagan Smith, General Counsel of the Copyright Office. We are here for our hearing on Class 9 for the Section 1201 rulemaking. So this concerns a proposed adjustment to the exemption for literary works in connection with medical device data. So someone from the government will be posing questions. You can use the raise hand button on Zoom or wave your hands. If that's not working for you, try to speak slowly for the court recorder and mute your audio when you're not speaking. And I think with that, we can introduce ourselves. So Mr. Amor, Ms. Kern, and Mr. Greenberg?
Hello, Kevin Amor, Deputy General Counsel.
Melinda Kern, Ringo fellow.
Brad Greenberg, Assistant General Counsel.
Mr. Zambrano Ramos.
Good afternoon, everyone. Luis Zambrano Ramos, a policy analyst at NTIA's Office of Policy Analysis and Development.
Thank you. And Mr. Froman, could you please introduce yourself and have your students introduce themselves as well?
Jeff Froman from USC on behalf of the Coalition of Medical Device Patients and Researchers, along with my two students who will introduce themselves. Keon, let's say go first.
Hi, Keon Zamuda, Clinical Intern at the USC Intellectual Property and Technology Clinic on behalf of the Coalition as well.
And Kate McCollum, Clinical Intern with the USC Intellectual Property and Technology Clinic, also representing the Coalition.
Great. And Mr. Reed, could you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, my name is Morgan Reed. I am the President of the App Association, but for today, I am here in my role as the Executive Director of the Connected Health Initiative. I am also a member of Health and Human Services Federal Advisory Committee for Education and Outreach, and am an intervenor with the FDA's work on quality metrics.
Great. Well, we're looking forward to this afternoon's discussion. Mr. Amor, would you like to kick it off?
Sure, thank you. So I think we wanted to start off with just sort of a general question for the proponents. You know, we see that you are seeking to remove certain language from the current exemption. If you could just kind of briefly summarize what the need is for the expansion, including any particular examples you can provide of, you know, an interest in or a need to circumvent additional categories of devices beyond what's currently covered.
Yeah, so we're currently seeking an expansion to include non-implanted medical devices. And the current exemption includes just implanted or partially implanted medical devices. So some examples of those would be CPAP machines, hearing aids that contain data logging mechanisms, and, you know, maybe wearable cardioverter defibrillators. But essentially, we're seeking the expansion because patients should be able to access the data from medical devices regardless of whether or not they're implanted or non-implanted. And there's been growth in this area with non-implanted medical devices. It's continuing. It will be, you know, an area where there's going to be continued growth in new medical devices that aren't implanted. And so we're seeking to expand the exemption to, you know, allow that in the next three years.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, I'd like to turn to you. I just want to make sure I am clear on the basis for your objection. So I know you're not here specifically on behalf of the App Association, but your comments do talk about an impact on app developers. You say the expansion would impact the ability of app developers to successfully compete in the mobile health marketplace. Could you expand on sort of what the specific basis for your concern?
Right, I think the easiest thing is that we agree with Ms. McClellan that patient access to data is something that's really important. In fact, at our filings with the Office of National Coordinator under the anti-blocking rules, our work with Food and Drug Administration on, geez, dating back to the September 2013 Mobile Medical Applications Guidance and the cybersecurity guidance as well, a through line on this has been ensuring patient access to data. The problem with the petitioner's request is it essentially ignores the work that's being done by quite literally every other regulatory body in this space to make patient information more available in a safe and secure manner. Because on its face, the petitioner's request is more about a right to hack than it is for a patient access to information. So we think that right now, the existence of the Food and Drug Administration's recommendation, the Center for Excellence, and the 2015 guidance that now Center for Excellence head, Bicol Patel, put forth is still vital and valid. And that is that the methodology by which patients should have access to their records is something that is viable under other laws. And a copyright change is something that raises significant security and risks that we think is not warranted. And so long as we have these other avenues, we think that's the better process to pursue.
Okay, thank you. Let me just mention one sort of logistical item, and that is if you would like to speak, we found it helpful if folks could use the raise hand function that hopefully you can see on your screens. It's also fine to just sort of wave your hand. We have a small enough group here that I think we should be able to see everybody pretty easily. So, Mr. Reed, if I could just follow up. So just to sort of make sure I understand the specific basis. So is this objection one that is tied specifically to a change that is being proposed here? I mean, there are a few. So what, how is that concern? Or to what extent is that, is your concern applicable in the context of this new expansion, but maybe less relevant under the current exemption?
Right, I think the real problem is that the, we're facing an obvious push and pull. The Food and Drug Administration, the FDA's Device Center is essentially saying to us, we must increase our use of TPMs, we must increase our use of encryption. And as the petitioner notes that this change is happening at the FDA, their request is fairly straightforward, and that is, well, if the FDA is going to require all of these TPMs to be put into place, we should have an exemption that allows us to circumvent said TPMs in order to have access to the patient data. And since the FDA already offers methodologies for patients to request data and to petition the FDA if the devices aren't providing it appropriately, it puts us in a real conundrum. How do you meet the requirements of your 510K and the upcoming suggested whole effort that we're doing around a pre-certification program if there exists in copyright law and a 1201 exemption that we have to allow for our devices to be hacked or that we have no legal recourse if our device is hacked? So it puts a lot of question as to how we could move forward. Specifically, if you look at the petitioner's request, as noted, they want to move beyond the embedded devices. But it also goes so far as to say it's not just merely to pull the data out passively, it's to engage with that data to then do other activities with it and the device itself. So it really is a more intrusive hack than merely monitoring the stream of data that comes off. So with regards to the request, I think we all agree patient access to data is the outcome that should be, that's worth seeking. But having the access only done through violating a TPM or to break a TPM is essentially putting patients at risk. And we see that as the biggest part of the problem with the request as it stands.
Okay, so you mentioned a couple of items there. So you mentioned the piece about removing the passive monitoring language, and we're gonna get to that. So, but the first thing you said that seemed to have to do with circumvention more generally. And I know that there was no opposition filed to renewal of the current medical device exemption. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand, you know, if circumstances have changed such that there are different, you know, FDA obligations that we should be aware of.
Yeah, so that's a good question, Mr. Amor. The part to think about is, so our industry, and I know this gets into an area that isn't normally covered, software as a medical device sometimes called SAMID or SAMD. We're really moving to a world where the FDA is very engaged on questions around not a device that's just implanted, but that software itself can be considered a medical device. And as part of that, the FDA is moving forward on something called a pre-certification program. Because frankly, again, when you develop a medical device, whether it's software or something physical, you build it, you complete the product, then you go through what's called a 510K process whereby they review the product as it stands. Now, within that context, you are allowed to provide certain security updates or modifications for cybersecurity risks, but they're very limited and very narrow. Because if any of the changes you make after you receive your 510K approval makes substantive changes or changes the labeling of your medical product, you have to repeat your 510K process altogether. So the FDA is now moving forward and saying, wait a minute. This slows the process by which medical devices can get into the hands of consumers, into hands of patients. So they've undertaken, I moved forward on a pilot project called a pre-certification program, which essentially says, as a company, I can go to the FDA and I can show them my development methodology, the way that I do privacy and security internally, the way I do privacy by design and security by design. And I essentially can shorten the period of time that it takes to get my device from the entry door at the FDA into the hands of patients. And the FDA has said at multiple sessions that both privacy and security, cybersecurity in particular, cybersecurity in particular, is of paramount importance for being approved as part of a pre-certification process. If the 1201 process now says, yeah, but you really, you know, there's going to be people hacking your device and they want to be able to modify it and make changes to it.
Yeah, could I just interrupt you?
So the major change that's going on right now is an industry-wide change to figure out how do we get products into hands of consumers faster yet still meet the FDA's cybersecurity requirements?
Right, but so just, but the question was, wasn't that also true previously under the, or now, under the current exemption?
No, no, there's, there has been a change in the philosophy at the FDA. The FDA has, starting, you can see it at the start with their 2013 guidance around mobile medical applications and the addition of what's called a risk triangle, through to more recent guidance that's come out under Gottlieb and now moving forward under the new administration, is this idea of how do we get products through the pipeline quicker? So it is a change philosophically in what the FDA is asking us to do. Now notably, sorry to go on, but notably, the thing to note is that the Office of National Coordinator over at HHS is doing the very thing that Ms. McClellan asked for, which is to demand from EHR vendors and everyone else that patients have access to their health records. So FDA is saying, make it secure. HHS is saying, make sure there's patient access. Right now, the industry can meet those goals. Well, hopefully, we'll meet those goals and we'll do it successfully. The injection of this idea of, oh yes, and there's also this 1201 exemption for hacking and essentially right to hack or right to change the device really puts a lot of that in question.
But, and I'm gonna just ask one more follow-up and then I'm gonna ask the proponents to step in. But it's not really an injection of anything new from our standpoint, is it? I mean, I guess I'm.
I'm sorry, if their exemption were granted, yes, it would change.
But can you explain then why you did not oppose the renewal of the existing exemption?
The current exemption is really for, is passive for data or wholly implanted devices. And so, again, passive data collecting isn't the same as actually changing the underlying software or directly engaging with the underlying software of the device. I think as an industry, we can find ways to ensure that the underpinning codebase is secure. And I want to be very careful. I think that we have a, we can be in a good position where the passive gathering of data, and remember, it's patient records, their data. I think that's something that can be done in a way that facilitates patient access but doesn't put the underlying secure code at risk. This expansion is a change in that.
Can I ask, is it two aspects of the expansion that we're talking about or is it the same aspect? Because if there's passive collection of data, okay. So the passive collection of data, that seems okay. And the difference is whether the medical device is implanted or not implanted, is that not a distinction really?
Yeah, I think that's a distinction. I think we agree with the petitioner in the sense that the continued growth of medical devices that are in fact wholly contained in software is something that is going to continue to expand. The question is, how do we properly secure patient safety in that environment? And so the passive collection of data is something that can, that there are ways to do it. But hacking the device is something that puts patient safety at risk and really puts us at odds with what our regulators are asking us to do in these other environments.
Okay, so implanted versus not implanted is not the question. Okay.
I think it ends up being a distinction without a difference. Because, you know, where it sits on your skin, how we engage with it. I think it's one of those where, again, a lot of this is in constant motion. We're hopefully developing amazing wearables that are more able to do things than you can do with an implanted today. But that's where the industry is hoping to go. So I think that the passive gathering of data is something that, whether it's implanted or not, is not the primary area of concern that we have.
Okay. Mr. Zambrano Ramos, I think you have a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ramir. This question is for Mr. Reed. I was hoping you could elaborate a little bit more on this notion that the 1201 process kind of would inhibit you from following other directives from other federal agencies, that you have to build a strong network. I'm not sure that the 1201 process requires you to not do that or do the opposite. So I'm just curious if you could elaborate on that.
That's a great question. So the problem is, again, back to the direction that the FDA and other regulatory bodies have headed with us, which is, we want you to show us how you are securing your device. How are you limiting access to your device? Right, so they want us to demonstrate, as petitioner noted, all of the ways in which we are building stronger and more capable TPMs. So within that framework, if there exists the idea that we, that there is no legal recourse under 1201 or in, under any legal recourse, because remember, there was a little confusion in the petitioner's request. The FDA doesn't regulate patients. It regulates medical devices. And so petitioner said, well, the existing FDA laws still apply. And so if a patient does something, patient, nothing happens to a patient. The FDA doesn't regulate patient activity. It regulates us, medical device, medical devices. So the problem that we run into is, in order to allow what's being requested by petitioners, we will find ourselves in a position where we need to demonstrate to the FDA all of the TPMs that we're putting into place. And if there is a legitimate 1201 exempted use that's undergoing at the same time, especially one that could end up leading to harm, the FDA is going to say, well, what are you doing to prevent this use? And it's very reminiscent of what happened recently to Medtronic and the MiniMed 503. There was not actually a hack that anybody, nobody died, and there was no harm to patients. But what was discovered is that Medtronic had not secured their network stack carefully enough, and they had to do a recall on an insulin pump. So even though petitioners are requesting the ability to do a little more intrusive hacking and listening, we have our regulator saying, if you don't light it down, lock it down tighter, we're gonna make you pull your product off the market until you then make that modification. So that's some of the concern.
Okay, but you can make the TPMs as strong as you want, right? I mean, this doesn't place.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
Granted, an exemption doesn't place any obligation on you to alter your practices with respect to implementing TPMs.
So now we're in the arms race game, right? Now we get into the arms race game. And what makes this a little different than the traditional consumer products as far as arms races? Remember, we are very limited on the changes that we can make that don't trigger an additional 510K process. So unlike the arms race that could happen on, say, Netflix, where somebody hacks it, they modify the code, it gets hacked, they modify it. We have to be very careful that modifications that we make to a medical software doesn't trigger an additional 510K review. So what you described, Kevin, is right. We can build better TPMs, and we will. But understand if there are legitimate legal attacks that are coming, we're gonna be facing additional escalation.
I guess I have a question. Are you suggesting that if this adjustment is made that the TPMs that are employed will be so, you know, deprecated that they'll be able to no longer use them? In which case, I wonder, is that, is that something we could address by the contours of the proposed adjustment? Because we have, we do have exemptions in other instances, right, for Blu-ray discs or DVDs, and those are still in the market because they are, they prohibit going after people who violate, you know, who go outside the bounds of something that is likely to be non-infringing.
So I think, I think part of the problem with this is, I would make a venue argument. The proposed construct of the ONC rules guarantees sharing of patient information with reasonable safeguards, including ones that protect security. So we're bound by those Office of National Coordinator rules to do this. So that's part of the problem that we have from the get-go. Your question is, well, could we find contours? I'd argue the goal of the petitioner is already being met in other venues. And this opens the door to abuses or potential abuses that I don't think are necessary to achieve the goal.
Well, I guess there's two issues, right? Under the statute, if there's not an adverse effect and it's already achievable, that's another issue we can look at. We should probe those questions. But if we're, if you are saying on this question that this exemption will cause some harm to the industry, I think we want to understand a little bit more where that concern is coming from. And I want to, I know like.
Yeah.
But let me just say, let me say one thing. Because we heard from the FDA in 2015, and they didn't really indicate a reliance interest on the DMCA. They did express some statements about the original medical device data limitation and how the registrar addressed it at that time was to give a 12-month grace period to allow agencies to adjust. And, you know, to the extent there was any reliance interest, you know, take it back into their own areas of expertise and outside of the copyright law, right? Because we're trying to center our willmaking on the adverse effect and likely non-infringing use questions. So I don't know if you can say anything to help us figure out if conditions have changed or what to make of it. Thank you.
I think that the reality is, the petitioner's gone further than the 2015 requests. Remember, this is, this is much more akin to a right-to-hack exemption than it is merely patient data access question. And I think that's the thing that is concerning. As you point out, the previous exemptions, and we didn't, we didn't object to the previous exemption in this case as well. Because I think it's something that, as you say, can respectfully center itself in where it should be standing on copyright law. But the door opener here to much more intrusive hacking onto medical devices is the area that raises the concern. So I think if you look back at the 2015 letter and what they said, and how do they do it? I think the two changes in industry between 2015 and now is this incredible pressure to provide a quality basis and a pre-approval on privacy and security before your product, before you've even gone through a 510K. So between 2015 and now, you have our primary regulator asking for this. So I think, I think back to your primary question. If we center this on the copyright angle, it's broader than, it's far broader than 2015. I don't think petitioner's request makes the case that it's vital. And since other agencies are doing the very things that they're asking to do, I think the uncertainty created by their request, the potential harm created by their request, and the breadth of the potential request, I just don't think there's enough there there to merit where their request is going. And again, we stand by the fact that we're not opposed to their original 2015 request moving forward as it stands.
Okay. I see, Mr. Zamuda, I'm gonna go to you if you'd like to respond to what's been said. And then I do think we want to, after that, drill down a bit on this idea of passive versus active monitoring. And so we'll have some questions on that. Mr. Zamuda?
Sure, yeah, and I can address some of that right now. Just to respond to a few things that opposer has said. First of all, this is a modest expansion. We are not going to be attempting to change requirements for device manufacturers. As the Copyright Office has stated, we wouldn't be, the exemption wouldn't be limiting the ways in which manufacturers can implement TPMs on their devices. And moreover, this is just, this exemption is just for access to data. Opposers suggests that non-passive monitoring would lead to access to software code, but that is not the case in many cases of non-passive monitoring. For example, in our comment, we describe SD cards on CPAP machines. And to get the data off an SD card in no way touches on the software code of the device. The SD card only stores data. That is its main function. And there is some circumvention of TPMs that is required to get that data, but there is no software code that is implicated. And we can go into other ways of non-passive monitoring that we foresee happening in the future. But before we get there, I'd also like to mention some other points that opposer made.
Sure.
Yeah, so as far as other penalties under other regulations, those would still be available. And even if the FDA does not regulate patients, as opposers suggests, there are other laws and regulations that would, such as the CFAA or HIPAA. So those penalties are still in place. And those might even be more tailored and more nuanced regulations that would be able to address the violations in a better way. And they might even be less severe, those penalties, under those other regulations. And we wouldn't want to over-penalize patients under the DMCA when other regulations do a better job of it. Further, opposer mentioned that there are other procedures under the FDA under which patients can get data. However, that is not the case. Under the FDA website that opposer pointed to in their opposition, you could complain to the FDA about malfunctions in your device, but that in no way implicated in getting data from the device itself through those complaint procedures.
Okay, let me just stop you there. That's helpful.
I need to, yeah, sorry.
Well, wait, I do want to just make sure we're sort of proceeding to each topic in turn. So it seems to me that this, and Mr. Reed, I think you indicated that the the main change that, you know, at least you've been talking about so far is the removal of the passive monitoring language. So I think we'd like to ask, let me just finish. I think we'd like to ask first the proponents some questions about what that means. And I'd like, I believe my colleague, Melinda Kern, has some questions about that.
Thank you, Mr. Amor. So I did have a couple of questions for the proponents. So just wanted you guys to explain a little bit how passive monitoring is having an adverse effect on any users. And specifically, like in the initial reply comments, the only reference was to CPAP machines and I believe to the SD cards that were within them. So I was wondering if you could also give us a couple more examples of both implanted and non-implanted medical devices that are impacted. of both implanted and non-implanted medical devices that are impacted by the passive monitoring limitation.
Yeah, so to the first part of your question, as far as other types of non-passive monitoring that might occur and how it might work in the future, although we don't have specific examples of those in our comments. Some ways it might work include reading the memory off your phone from data that your phone collects from a device. In that case, there may or may not be circumvention necessary, but it might be possible. It might be required to, you might be required to decode the data off the memory on your phone. Another way that non-passive monitoring might work is to actively connect to a medical device or receiver on that device to request the data from a program on that device. So that might include, given the, if the device were connected to the internet, that might include a web request on the device. And that might, may require authentication and that might implicate TPM as well. Another way that non-passive monitoring might work would be to actively intercept the data while the data is en route to a server from the device. So although that does sound like passive monitoring in that there is a wireless communication that you intercept, the difference there is that you might actually have to communicate with the device in order to get the data. So although you're intercepting wireless data, you will have to still communicate with the device in order to gather all the data. So those are three ways that we might see non-passive monitoring happen in the future.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have difficulty hearing that? I had a little trouble. Okay.
Yeah, we had a little, there may be a issue. You know, it's still a little garbled.
Melinda, it might help if you turn off your video.
Okay, everyone, you're now, I just asked. No, I think that didn't work. I don't know if you have headphones to try. If not, we can, and then it'll go away.
Well, yeah, so this is the world we're, we're in now, where little technical issues come up with Zoom. So we appreciate everybody understanding, just to follow up. So, um, so there are certain, those are examples of activities that you think are currently, or at least arguably not permitted under the current language. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm going to give Mr. Reed a chance to respond to that. Does that, and what I, but I, what I would like you to answer specifically is that does the sort of activity that the proponents described implicate any greater copyright concerns than passive monitoring?
Yeah, I think, I think two things, well, there's three things to cover, but I want to get to yours. This is probably my fault, but I should have referred directly to the copy here. I'd remind everyone that the petitioner's request also includes number two, to permit third parties to perform the circumvention with permission on behalf of the patients. So remember, this is not merely that the patient has access to the passive data, whether it's implanted or otherwise, but it's the ability of third parties to create toolsets that would allow for that change. And that, I think, I realize as we're talking about this, maybe that's part of why we're talking past each other. It's that allowance of third parties, I, I've been referring it to as kind of the right to hack, that ability to develop two third-party toolsets that raises the greatest amount of question. And again, I don't think the Copyright Office is, is in the habit of granting exceptions on MIT. But I do want to go back a little bit to something that's very worrisome and nationally we need to correct. The earlier mention of HIPAA. HIPAA doesn't regulate patients. It's actually a portability, it's the insurance portability and not a privacy act. It has something called the Privacy Rule that was passed in 2000. But the only people that the Office of Civil Rights, which oversees HIPAA, can engage with are what are called covered entities or BAs, Business Associates of Covered Entities. So the idea that the Office of Civil Rights could bring some action against a patient is ludicrous. And that's, that's actually what's very interesting about this whole question. HIPAA is exactly what empowers their ability for patients to go to a provider and request that information. It's an underpinning of the entire patient access to data. So the onus of HIPAA is on the provider, the covered entity, not on the patient. And earlier, there was a comment about the FDA, you know, the FDA isn't the right vehicle. But I'd note that the 2016 guidance, for everyone playing at home, I pulled it up on the screen, dated the manufacturer sharing patient-specific information for medical devices with patients upon request is a 2016 guidance that was provided to us. And it actually includes that manufacturers are strongly encouraged to provide patient-specific information, including data, healthcare provider inputs in the device to record the status or ongoing treatment of an individual patient, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll jump ahead.
Let me just jump in. So again, we do have a few different, I mean, just to sort of preview things. When we want to be conscious of time, we do, you've raised concern, you've raised possible alternatives to circumvention, which you just were mentioning there, so we'll get to that. You also mentioned third-party assistance, which I also want to get to. But just to sort of wrap up this question on passive monitoring. And I'm going to first ask the proponents. So it, there seems to be a suggestion, although it's not entirely clear to me, that active monitoring could, in some cases, involve altering the software of the device. And I know, you know, the copyrighted work that we're talking about here is these compilations of medical device, which is separate from the, the software used to operate the device. But I think I'm, I'm interested in knowing to what extent these additional monitoring activities you're talking about may necessitate alteration or involve alteration of the device firmware.
Yeah, to address that, we, it is unlikely that any of these non-passive monitoring techniques would alter the software firmware of the device. Specifically, to go back to some of the examples that we gave. If you were to read data off the memory of your phone, that wouldn't require any hacking of the software, as opposer describes. There would just be data on the memory of your phone that you read. And in other cases, you would just be requesting the data actively or intercepting the data. So there wouldn't be any, for the most part, there wouldn't be any touching of software.
Can I ask a question? Is there a need for an exemption that would permit touching the firmware or software? Or is that something we could just exclude?
No, there's.
I can know.
Oh, go ahead. Sure.
Um, I, I think part of this is that, you know, due to the chilling effect, we don't know exactly what would be needed. But we do know that, that if someone were to, you know, to access the firmware for purposes other than accessing their medical data, that that would still be outside our proposed exemption. And, you know, you have the, the Copyright Office in previous exemptions, if you look at the 2018 exemptions in several places, has specifically said, and not accessed it for the purposes of gaining access to other copyrighted works, which could include media, but could also include software. But I'm not sure we would, I, I don't think we would want to carve it out of the exemption because there might be some circumstances in which there is overlap that in order to get to the data, something else is inadvertently accessed, even though it's not used for any purpose.
Right, well, I appreciate your, your spirit of invoking how we approached similar requests because that, that is sort of what I am thinking. Because it seems like if there's an opportunity for consensus to carve out some of the activities that Mr. Reed is worried about, that you're not aware of a need for, that might be a good way to adjust this exemption. And, and one thing I wonder if you could consider, and if you don't have an answer now, that's okay. But in 2015, there was an exemption for auto repair that excluded access to the telematic system because there was not a record showing that was necessary. There was some concern about incidental access that was raised later. But we, we sort of did that incrementally on a showing of need. And I'm wondering if that is an appropriate course to take care of where we're not sure that we need to access or adjust the firmware or software.
Um, I think we might need to look a little more. I think part of the challenge here is there's not as clear a division between the telematic systems and the other systems. Or there's not as clear a division in medical devices because we're talking about such a broad array of types of devices as there is with cars between the telematic systems and other systems. So I think it's harder to clearly carve that out without inadvertently impacting sort of normal forms of access. I think this is a little bit closer to, and then I, and to be clear, I'm only talking about this, the, the case you're talking about, where you need to access the software in order to get access to the data. I think it's a little closer to say the carrier unlocking exemptions, which did allow access to software sort of inadvertently along the way, but still we're not permitted to modify the software or do other things that were not otherwise exempt. So I, I'm not sure it works as cleanly in this instance as it does, but I don't think we are against it conceptually, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Reed, did you want to weigh in on any of the typical design features that there are? And, and I realize I did put you on the spot, Mr. Permanente, for engaging and keeping the line open would be good.
It's okay. I think though that, I, I think it's interesting to note that, I, I kind of feel like Jeff made my point, which is there is this close overlap between the software as a medical device, what it does. And I think when you couple that with Mr. Zamuda's point where he said it's, quote, "unlikely" that it would have an impact. The difference between a DVD player is if you get it wrong, it doesn't kill grandma. And we are talking about devices that do deliver insulin, that do deliver shocks to the heart, that do deliver information about your blood pressure, that can affect the medication that your doctor prescribes. So I don't think the petitioner's made a case when they acknowledge that the, the scope is broad because of the way the devices work. And the best they can merit is it's unlikely. When one considers the Medtronic impact on insulin pumps that merely had a potentially readable signal and that pulled 4,000 implement pumps off the market. I just don't think the, the petitioner's case is strong enough in light of the fact that other agencies are doing the work to meet their stated need of access to patient data.
Well, so, I mean, as the exemption is framed now, it refers to literary works consisting of compilations of data. But we do have lots of other exemptions that allow circumvention to access computer programs for various purposes. And, you know, in, in many cases, you know, jailbreaking, security research, et cetera. And, you know, we have a pretty, there are lots of examples where the office has said, you know, that that sort of activity may well be fair use. So I, I'm not sure if the, you know, to the extent that TPMs may be protecting both medical data and computer software, I, you know, I wonder if that would, you know, and one answer might be to consider expanding the exemption and then including language, like we've talked about, you know, so long as the circumvention is not undertaken for an infringing purpose with respect to the software.
I, I guess, I don't know if that was directed at me, but I think the problem with it is, is I don't, I don't see that petitioner's made the case that an exemption is needed. As, again, as I said, the stated goal of the exemption is to make sure the patients have access to their data. Quite literally, most of the other arm of the, of other arms of government in this instance are doing everything in their power to make sure that patients have access to data. And since this process is, exemptions are to be granted narrowly and carefully, I'm not really sure that the barrier has been overcome. As I said, especially in light of the fact that there are these enormous forces coming to bear to get the outcome petitioner's requested. I just don't think it meets the test yet. And maybe if it does, if we see in three years with an including, you know, with Samad hitting more places, we can revisit it, but right now it's just not ready for prime time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McClellan.
Um, yes, I'd like to just address Mr. Reed's point that he's, you know, repeating that we, that patients do have access to their data or that other people, other organizations are working to provide access to that data. But in fact, this data isn't included in a health record that you request from your doctor. It's, you know, the raw data from the CPAP machine. That's a lot of information. I don't think that's written down anywhere in a health file that the patient can access from their doctor. Furthermore, we're requesting real-time access for patients. So patients being able to access this data without having to go through talking to someone and filing a form and waiting to hear back. And we're requesting for people to be able to access this stuff in real time.
So I would be happy to facilitate a conversation with the Office of National Coordinator, with Mickey Trupati, because the scope of the ONC rule actually does impact the ability of patients to request data. In fact, in our filings, we've actually been pushing hard to encourage the Office of National Coordinator to include two-way APIs for ability to access information where it's passed to a covered entity. Now, we do have to occupy, occupy and occupy the space that is covered under OCR. But I do think you should note that it is required that the data be provided in a reasonable and timely way and that it even has cost restrictions. Your ability to request your data is limited. You, in other words, you can't be given an onerous cost when you request that data. So I think there are opportunities for us to work together to achieve the same goal, which is patient access to the data. And that's, if that's the goal, that's great. If the goal is to encourage the development of third-party hacking tools, that's where I think we part ways. And so I think right now, back to Kevin's question, I don't think the bar has been met to include the language that says to permit third parties to perform circumvention. But I am happy to work with petitioners to extend the goal of data, either through ONC or FDA on this.
Okay, so let's take those in turn. So let's just put third-party assistance to the side for one second. But I, I do want to make sure I understand this dispute about whether there are adequate alternatives to circumvention. So let me start with, let me start with the proponents. So I'd like you to respond to, you know, the potential alternative avenues that Mr. Reed mentioned. And I, I know specifically in the app association's submissions, they talked about the Cures Act or the FDA's website. Could you address whether those can provide the same type of data that, that you're, that you're seeking with this exemption?
Yes, I believe we discussed it in our reply comment, but we don't believe that this does provide the same access to that, to that data that it doesn't provide the same access to like the raw data from, say, a CPAP machine that you're going to get from reading the SD card. And also that going through that method, you're still not getting real-time access, which is what we're seeking for patients who are looking to circumvent TPMs and access that data. Also, I would just note that Mr. Reed said a couple of times that, you know, he would like to work with us on gaining access to that data for patients. And, you know, we're happy to pursue other avenues as well. But the reality is that this shouldn't be a DMCA violation. And I think also, just going to note that saying that, you know, his organization is working to provide better ways for patients to access that data just shows the fact that they can't access that data.
Just to clarify.
Would you like to respond? And especially, just one second, I'm especially interested in whether you have a response to the specific point about, you know, whether through these alternative methods, people can get access to the, the raw data and to do so in, in real time.
Right, so there's, there are some really interesting questions about raw data access and what does it go through and what kind of APIs are available and what APIs government agencies are essentially requiring. The problem, the, the thing that we're pushing for actually is kind of the step further, which is how do we make sure that, that the data is accessible in real time and also manageable by a third-party authorized application? So our solution to this problem, which is something that is supported by the FDA and others, is to ensure either through the use of the, you know, we could talk about FIRE standard and HLC seven and all that stuff. But ultimately, the real goal should be. HLC seven and all that stuff, but ultimately the real goal should be that your medical device has a standardized API and standardized data formats that the patient can then choose their own application to run on. But in order to do that, there has to be an assurance of security and privacy. Um, as security, most importantly. So what the problem that it's, it's created is, again, taking them on a good faith effort. If the end goal is to make sure that the patients can say access their CPAP data on an app on their phone and then can engage with their doctor. Their only way the physician is going to want that data to be provided to them if they have some sense of the providence of the data and the way that it reaches there. And that's part of the reason that you've seen these other agencies really adopt this idea of standardized messages, standardized APIs, and a way for that material to reach the physician in a format that's usable. Now that said, we want engaged patients. So finding that middle ground, I just kind of go back to the primary. The copyright office is really, this is a space that isn't really the copyright space's primary occupation. And so I think involving a 1201 language in this is is disruptive to the end goal stated by the petitioner. And that is to get the communities aligned so that there's access to the data. But to your primary point, I disagree. Um, our meetings with the Health and Human Services with FDA and others have made it very clear that it is a strong goal and something that they are attempting to achieve. And there are multiple opportunities to petition FDA and ONC to accomplish a more accurate and a more timely release of data. So, uh, the rule, by the way, that governs this went into effect literally three days ago. That's part of why, it's part of why my voice is worn out. The Office of National Coordinator's enforcement literally kicked off three days ago. So I don't think we're at the place where we need the copyright office to step in. We need to see how the 21st century Cures Act and the ONC anti-blocking rule play out a little longer than three days.
Okay. Let me just, thank you. Let me just make sure I understand. And, and you're right. This is not the, the space that we usually occupy. So this may be a very basic question, but I mean, so say I'm a patient and, you know, I have a CPAP machine and for whatever reason I want to access the, the data that it's producing. What would be the procedure that you're suggesting I should follow uh, in order to get that information, uh, short of circumventing the device?
Great question. So I think part of it is we are on a, on a fast moving treadmill. If your CPAP machine doesn't include its own connection to an application and doesn't provide that information to an EHR or doesn't provide the, the data to the EHR um, or to the, um, to the physician with the, all of the metrics that the patient is requesting. I, I think that's something that's worth contacting the manufacturer about and saying, where is this data? Why are we not being able to see it? Remember, the patient can request info from any health developer or health info network. So in large part, what we're seeing is a reversal that the industry is moving to devices that um, are providing data to the patient, are doing more to tie it to a mobile application that's available on your phone to use the either Epic or Cerner or someone else's methodology to port that information into EHR. So if you have that CPAP, the first thing I'd suggest you do is, um, get a new CPAP that includes, uh, includes a connection to an app. If it doesn't have that, there are places to petition in the appropriate oversight areas of food and drug or the Office of National Coordinator. So products are on the market that do what they want, but I also respect that some people may not have those. So I think there is, you know, there is ability to do that.
Let me just jump in and I, we're running short on time and I do want to get to third party assistance, but I, I just want to make sure I understand this point. So you, you talk about going to the manufacturer. That's one option. And then what, what's the process that? How, how would the, if I go to the FDA, how do I get from that point to obtaining data from this device that I have here in my house and the FDA, you know, doesn't have any connection to? That's what I'm not understanding.
Yeah, I understand. And I mean, we're so far outside of copyright. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit awkward. I'm trying to keep bringing it back to the copyright space, but roughly speaking, um, under the guidance, it's been in effect since 2016. You go to the FDA and say, hey, manufacturer X is not following the 2016 guidance on manufacturers sharing patient-specific information from medical devices. Um, you could go and petition them. You'd also, uh, that, that is assuming your initial, Kevin, that your initial, um, question is I went to the manufacturer and they told me, no, they won't give me the data. If you're told that, then now we're into the legal recourse and that is you can go to the FDA and say they're not abiding by the 2016 guidance. If that doesn't work, you can also, or concomitantly, go to the Office of National Coordinator and say they are in violation of the anti-blocking rule or that suggests that the data that they're providing isn't, isn't appropriate and that the ONC's Inspector General Office needs to take action against that manufacturer. Those are all avenues that exist and they are, um, they are still ones that exist in the framework of not, of making sure that you don't kill grandma because you hacked your insulin pump and it, and it, and it over, it overloads her insulin levels. So I think that's, and that's back to your third party point, which is a lot of the areas in which you can get access to your data are, do involve taking an action to one of the existing regulators. Um, and that's because they are concerned about life and welfare of the patient. So that's the juxtaposition on the, on where we sit.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I want to go to Mr. Zambrano Ramos and then, um, I, I do want to, uh, just turn quickly to third party assistance. I know we're getting close to time. Hopefully everyone can run over just a few minutes. Um, so Mr. Zambrano Ramos.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Amir. Uh, Mr. Reed, sort of going back to the point about this not being really the primary space where the copyright office plays. It's not also the space where NPIA plays. Uh, and I'm just curious that given that this is a process about copyright, uh, should health and safety issues really figure in? Um, on the, on the one hand, it seemed, uh, the earlier discussion was about not granting the exemption because it's dangerous from a health perspective. But, but on the other hand, uh, this is also, you know, a copyright proceeding. So um, I'm, I'm just curious if you could kind of, um, square those few things together so that we can better understand.
So I think morally, yes. I, I think the idea that the copyright office should be blind to the implications for health and safety, um, is a a, a little bit of an abrogation of kind of moral duty, which is to be a thinking person and to say, yes, I understand this is outside the scope of it, but what are the implications? What, what doors am I opening? And as we started this, petitioner has one example of one CPAP machine. So I would say there's a little bit of a weighing of the equities here to say, um, there is a little bit of a duty to be a thoughtful person about this. And since we're not being flooded with examples of company after company after company restricting access to patient data, uh, I think it's pretty easy to stake a stand that says, you know what? Let's err on the side of, of safety um, in this instance. So yeah, I do think there's a, a little bit of a responsibility, given that the proponents have brought one CPAP example from one company.
Um, Mr. Zamuda, just if you could respond very, very quickly and then we're going to move to the next topic.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the one point that as the copyright office has noted, uh, the question here is whether adverse effects, um, are occurring and whether their patients have the, uh, are making non-infringing uses of the underlying data. And if Congress wants to directly or indirectly regulate medical device safety, they can, but there has been no indication that Congress wants the copyright office to do this. Um, and the amount of time that we have spent trying to parse out FDA regulations and the Cures Act here underlies um, the fact that really this is, um, a congressional area and not something the copyright office needs to deal with.
I'd agree, and that's why we shouldn't grant the petitioner. It's really not necessary.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I'm going to turn it. Hopefully, um, Ms. Kern's audio is, is back on track. So I think she has some questions on third party assistance. Just bear with us one second. And we still, we Okay. I think, I think it's still not working. Unfortunately, that's, uh, that's okay. Um, so on this third party, so to the petitioners, you've asked to, um, add language that would allow circumvention to be undertaken on or on behalf, by or on behalf of a patient. So, you know, as, as you may know, you know, we've, we've had a lot of requests in previous years regarding third party assistance and the approach that we took, uh, you know, we've always been conscious about, um, not suggesting that, uh, not sort of, um, potentially running afoul of the anti-trafficking provisions. So, um, in the repair exemption, the last time we, we were essentially silent on, on uh, whether third parties may, might be able to be within the class of beneficiaries for an exemption. I'm wondering if you're familiar with that and if there's a reason, if you have views about whether we should take that same approach here.
Yes. Um, yes. Uh, we are cognizant of the fact that, you know, understandably, the copyright office is hesitant to write any exemption that might, in a way that might imply um, something is okay, that wouldn't be okay under the anti-trafficking provisions. And as such, we're more than happy, we're okay with the idea of restructuring the exemption language that we proposed to reflect uh, similar language used by the copyright office in the repair exemption or in the exemption for, uh, you know, changing devices for accessibility purposes for blind people or other disabled persons trying to use a copyrighted work that they otherwise couldn't. So both of those ways, I think the corporate office used more passive language and kind of left it open for maybe uh, future courts to provide more elaboration on what exactly would constitute a violation of the anti-trafficking provisions. And that's something that we would be okay with in this instance as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. Um, I want to give Mr. Reed a chance to address that. And then just to let you know where we're going. I would like to also, I'm going to have a question after that about, um, the proposal that would take out the language regarding compliance with other applicable laws. So, uh, Mr. Reed, is, I know that you are opposed and you've talked about the concern about third parties potentially being within the class of beneficiaries here. Is there anything else you would like to say on that? And I'm particularly interested in, you know, is the concern based on the, the sort of safety, uh, issues that you raised or is it, is, is there a particular sort of copyright related concern that you also want to bring to our attention?
No, I mean, I think it's the easiest way to note is that third parties are not, um, subject to the obligations that we are um, that, that health tech companies are obligated before the FDA, ONC. Um, we know, we talked about HIPAA, uh, covered entities. So yeah, the, the real problem is third parties are not, um, are not subject to the rigor and standard that we expect. Um, as far as, uh, beyond that, what you're talking about going further, I come back to the need to make sure that we are not erring on the side of putting things at greater risk. So when it comes to the copyright language, you said, how do we fit this into a copyright box? Um, I, I guess I would say that I don't think it's, um, I don't think we're there yet on the third party access because as you noted, the likely outcome based on the petitioner's language is really the ability to, um, engage with the underlying software that is built. And if it's Samit or otherwise, has been approved through the FDA. So bluntly put, yeah, not, um, I, I just don't think, um, oh, third parties will be regulated. And if they're not regulated, that puts health risks at play.
Okay. Thank you. The, the last topic, and I appreciate everyone's patience. Last topic I wanted to ask about was, uh, the proposal to remove language about compliance with other laws. We, we talked about the same issue this morning, uh, in the context of the security research exemption. I'd like to ask the, um, the proponents, you know, and as we noted before, you know, this, this language does track the language in the, um, statutory permanent exemption, um, 1201J regarding security testing. Um, in general, you know, the office has, has tried where possible to, to retain the statutory language. I'm wondering if you could elaborate on the particular basis for, for wanting to remove this language and in particular whether, you know, there are any examples you want to introduce into the record about, um, you know, people being deterred uh, or reluctant to engage in this kind of activity because of the other laws language.
Yeah. So just to elaborate again on why we want to remove, uh, this language, we just think it's unnecessary and, uh, redundant to condition the exemption on compliance with other laws and regulations. Uh, as we've addressed, there are penalties under other laws and regulations that are deterrent enough. Uh, we do have, um, one example regarding, uh, researchers, uh, we mentioned in the comment, researchers who, uh, did not want to undertake a research because of, um, you know, because of risk of not complying with, uh, security-related laws. And, um, moreover, we did, um, listen in on the hearings this morning and we do think that the DOJ's recommendation on, uh, adding language about notifying people on having to comply with other laws. Uh, we do think that would be a good, um, addition to the language in place of something like, having to comply with other laws or lawfully accessing, uh, the data. So, uh, I believe the DOJ's recommendation was to add language, uh, requiring, uh, stating that qualification for an exemption is not a safe harbor or defense to liability under other applicable laws. And we think that would do a great job of notifying the public while not adding further penalties under the DMCA.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Yeah, um, we did go over this, this morning in, in, at a great length. Um, the one difference which compounds why that we should not move forward with this exemption is unlike the morning, this, the, the discussion this morning, if that device harms a patient, we're liable. So, uh, if, if an anti-circumvention technology is used to, um, to break into a DVD so that you can stream it or watch it, the company manufacturing the DVD player isn't liable. If, uh, if the medical device is hacked and it ends up, um, harming a patient, you know, in the methodology that its circumvention was undertaken, we're going to get sued and people will die. So that's the, the difference in this context. And again, um, petitioner keeps saying that the, that other regulations apply. Those regulations wouldn't apply in this instance because in the example of third parties, they're not a regulated medical device manufacturer. They aren't the, the, again, HIPAA only applies to covered entities or business associates of covered entities. And that requires a filing and electronics insurance claim. So in these instances, there's a lot of hand waving about laws that apply. But outside of the Federal Trade Commission's, um, ability under unfair and deceptive, uh, the laws apply to manufacturers of medical devices, including software as a medical device and those engaged in the practice and provision of medicine. So, yeah, it's, it's a lot different than the conversation we had earlier this morning because the outcome of a mistake is so much more dramatic. But other than that, you, you noted it. We covered all the, we covered all the four corners of the copyright portion earlier this morning.
I'm not sure I understand the liability concern. I mean, if, if a patient alters their device in such a way that you know, it, it just, um, all affects the way the device operates or is dangerous or something like that. Is there a realistic likelihood that
Yes.
that the manufacturer will be liable?
Hundred, hundred percent happens regularly. Again, I mentioned the Medtronic MiniMed 503. They literally pulled that off the market on the possibility that the, um, security hole was broad enough that it could in fact do that. No patient was harmed. No patient was harmed. Nobody died. Medtronic had to pull 4,000 insulin pumps off the market, recall them, re-alter the software, um, and put in new devices to everybody. And that didn't actually even harm anyone. And yet the FDA was concerned enough about it to request strongly that Medtronic pull those products off the market. So there are dozens of examples. So there are dozens of examples like that. It doesn't take a death to create the, the possibility of liability. It can create the, that you did not do enough to prevent harm to the patient. So absolutely, and if someone dies, they absolutely will sue. And their claim in court would be, yes, Bob Jones altered the software on that product, but you, manufacturer of the, of the product, should have done more to prevent the ability to hack that product in a way that would have put the patient's risk, patient's safety at risk. That's a very standard conversation in the medical device marketplace, which it isn't just caveat emptor. It's what are you doing to proactively protect the patient? And so, yeah, yes, definitely liability would, would play a role.
Okay, and so, I mean, I guess what we heard this morning though is that, you know, given that these laws continue to apply regardless of what the Copyright Office does, is there a need to tie eligibility for the 1201 exemption to compliance with, with laws that, as you say, are not really within our expertise?
Well, I, I think we kind of just said it. The idea of, at least the exemption as it previously exists, does say you need to comply with law, these other laws. The idea of removing that makes the negative outcomes more likely. At least this prove, this provides some Band-Aid to a third party that might wait, want to do it to say, we can't just claim a 1201 exemption because we still will have to make sure that we're meeting the 2013 guidance around medical, mobile medical applications, for example. You know, we'll still have to look at the risk framework. We still need to make sure we're meeting FIPS. So a third party that would look at this and say, can I take advantage of it? Would, would have to say, yeah, but we still need to comply with these other things. So we have a duty due to a better job. So yeah, I, I think it would be a mistake to take them out.
Thank you. I, we've run a little bit over, but I think I don't have any more questions. Do any of my Copyright Office colleagues or Mr. Zambrano Ramos have any questions? Yes, Mr. Zambrano Ramos.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ramirez. This question is for Mr. Reed. You just spanned briefly on this point. I'm, I'm just curious, how does, I guess, how does Section 1201 foreclose the kind of lawsuits that you're talking about? Because some, some of these exemption methods, or some, some of these tools to circumvent already exist, whether or not they, they are lawful, not speaking to that. So I'm just curious, what's the mechanism by which granting an exemption would lead to an increase in these lawsuits?
You're essentially saying, you know, the barn door is open, so what does it really matter? I think the difference really goes to that question about the, the petitioner's request to open the door to third-party tools being made available. And we get into the trafficking area. I think the, to grant this exemption does, does open the barn door and does change, change what's inside. The fact that you would essentially have a product that now I can go and make a product that hacks into it and I can stand by the copyrights language to say this third-party tool allows me to do these things, does create a market for toolsets that I can now publicly, not just on the dark web, that I can put out publicly and say, buy my product to hack your insulin pump or your diabetes tool. So I think that it does, the real reason is, is the trafficking question. And yes, there are some very interesting open-source products that exist that do provide ways to passively monitor the information that come off these devices. And I think that that's something that has to be constantly looked at by the FDA and others. But I think opening the door and saying, yes, come on in, the water's fine, third parties build tools, that absolutely changes the environment in a way that has the potential to negatively impact patients. So yeah, I, I don't think granting it accomplishes, doesn't, it's not foreclosed.
Thanks, and just to be clear, I wasn't suggesting sort of the barn scenario. I was just asking about the connections between that and 1201. Thank you so much.
Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, you know, the concept of, I guess, widespread commercial use of third-party tools. That's not really what we're advocating for here. Primarily, what we're trying to allow is for third-party assistance of patients just in this narrow exemption to be able to access their medical data, not, you know, like widespread commercial release of a circumvention tool. I think we can all agree that would very clearly violate the anti-trafficking provisions in Section 1201.
Okay, thank you all very much. I think that will conclude this session.